All right, let's get this meeting of the City of International Falls to order. If you could please join me in pledging allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Please note that all members of the council are present. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written. I don't understand that there's any deletions or additions.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Buller. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion carries five zero. Next, we go to our meeting agenda, or I'm sorry, our minutes from June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kayler.
Second.
Second by Councilor Wagner. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes. Motion carries five zero. We'll go to accounts payable, payments and claims. We have International Falls transfers going to the one oh one general fund of seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and ninety-five cents, and that's coming from the eight twelve lodging tax fund. International Falls payable and claims, regular International Falls claims of two hundred thirty-four thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars and thirty-six cents. Airport commission claims of fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars and forty-two cents, and major airport capital plot project claims of eighty-five thousand, five hundred forty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents for a total accounts payable and claims of three hundred seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred seventy-two dollars and sixty cents. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution to pay the payments and claims.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden.
Second.
Second by Councilor Wagner. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes. Motion carries five zero. We'll go to audience. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to bring anything forward? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. I'm Bill Larson. Seventeen thirteen, Eleventh Avenue. I guess I'm here to give you guys a little lesson. This is a copy of the Enabling Legislation for the Sanitary City District. Okay? What it says is, I'll just read part of it. Qualifications for each board member shall be resident of the particular government entity that he represents. Mr. Bigler is not big there. Mr. Briggs moved out of the city limits, didn't he?
He has, yep.
So that makes him ineligible, doesn't it?
Yes.
Have any of you guys ever seen us before? Any of you, you're on the board, you're on the board, you're on the board, right? Never heard about it before? Then why aren't you going by it?
So Representative Briggs was on the board. We kept that on. We opened it up to members in the community. We have, oh. Um, we opened it up to members in the community. We were not able to find anybody else.
That's no reason, hasn't it? Hasn't what it says.
And the board itself is also trying to change the legislation on how the membership works. Um, I believe that Councilor Buller could answer that because there's legislation to lower the amount of members that the City of International Falls has on that board right now. Is that not correct?
Correct. It's to lower that and also add one member to the East Cooch Board because of the expansion out there, and there is no paper makers, so that that board position will be elevated, and so will the South Falls Board, and Senator Housechild has been carrying that right now.
But why would you change the residency requirement? Or you're not?
Um, I, the City of International Falls in our, our, not the constitution, our charter. Our charter allows the mayor to appoint one person onto any board and commission that does not live in the City of International Falls that can represent the city. So therefore, that is the one person that we used because we used our city charter to give us the opportunity to be able to appoint someone that does not live in the city as a representative of the city.
You had a meeting last week, didn't they? A board meeting. Well, you were gone.
I was gone at the last meeting.
So were you. So did you have a quorum, didn't you?
No, they didn't.
But they had a meeting anyways, didn't they?
They what?
Had a meeting anyways, didn't they?
Well, it was just some discussion. It wasn't anything voted on.
Had a meeting.
No, no action were taken.
No action was taken.
Huh?
No action was taken.
What?
To violate the open meeting laws without a quorum, they would have had to act on something. They would have had to bring a motion. No motions were made.
They still had a meeting though. They talked about business though, didn't they?
Yes, and that was published, that potentially a quorum would be there. No open meeting laws were violated.
That isn't what the meeting was supposed to be also, was it?
They couldn't hold a formal meeting because they didn't have a quorum.
Shouldn't have had a meeting. I should have waited until you had one later that week though, didn't you?
No.
No, you can still meet.
You can meet without a quorum. You can meet with a quorum. You can't make actions or motions without a quorum, and that wasn't done.
They talked about all the business though, didn't they?
They are certainly allowed to do that.
They're allowed to do that.
You can talk about it, yeah. Even without a quorum.
Don't you think Mr. Briggs should have resigned when they moved out of the city limits?
No, not based off of what we have the opportunity to appoint.
Huh?
We have the opportunity to appoint someone who doesn't live within the city limits.
He's no longer a resident of the city once he moves out of the city limits.
I understand that. Our city charter allows the mayor to make an appointment.
You did not even advertise, did you?
Yes, we did.
When?
In November and December, we went out for applications for all open, uh, open appointments.
For all open appointments. You didn't just advertise for a board member though, did you?
We advertised for all city appointments, and we listed each one of what they were.
You didn't list it out there. All city appointments.
Yeah, all committees.
But not individually, you didn't list them.
Yes, they're, they tell you which committee if you want to apply for it.
When you made an appointment in the spring or the first year, whenever it was, you asked if you could keep Mr. Briggs on, didn't you?
Yes.
A non-resident. I'm a resident of International Falls, you know that.
I do.
Yeah.
And you were on the board and you had resigned, and you've never asked to come back onto that board.
It's pretty hard to get people on there, isn't it?
It is.
So how are you going to correct that?
We're going to keep advertising for people to go onto that board.
And you've had trouble getting people on there for ever since you've been on there, haven't you? What appointments did you make? On that board?
I've added city councilors onto that board.
The three city council members are on there, right? You made appointments to that?
There's three of us on there.
Huh?
There's three of us on there.
Yeah. There's four. I'm just talking about the ones that are here.
Right, there are three, two, and myself are on the board.
And Mr. Briggs.
He's not on the city council.
And Mr. Briggs was a resident.
Briggs is not on the council, and he's, he's not on the city council anymore.
But he was a resident at the time he got on there, wasn't he?
Well, if the mayor has the right to appoint somebody to fill in until there's a different, you know, selection of people that really want to be on there.
Then the rules in here say that if you got an opening, it's supposed to be filled within six days.
What if you can't fill it?
Then it's up to the judge to fill it.
But it was filled, but it was filled.
You can appoint somebody.
I did. I appointed Briggs.
You can appoint a resident, yeah.
I can appoint a non-resident according to our city charter.
No, you can't.
All right.
No, you can't.
You have, you have had five minutes. Thank you.
You have to appoint a resident of International Falls. You don't appoint somebody that's all in the city or all in the county just because you can't get anybody.
I think if there would have been somebody there from International Falls that wanted to be on there, he probably would have got appointed that person.
That isn't what it says.
But there was nobody that wanted to be on there. So Brian Briggs has a ton of experience on there, and the mayor has the right to put him on there until we find somebody.
No, you don't. That isn't what it says.
All right, thank you.
I'm not done yet.
Well, you got five minutes to speak, so you've had seven minutes to speak. We went longer than normal.
So I'm over to five minutes, then?
Yes, you are, sir.
That's fine. We'll see how fine it is.
Thank you.
I'll talk to city or county attorney about it.
Me?
Got the city attorney right here you can talk to.
All right, anybody else from audience like to bring anything forward? All right, hearing none, we'll go to the new business, Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities update, Bradley Peterson, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. My name is Bradley Peterson here with the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. Uh, we try to, as you know, get out and visit as many of our members as we can in the interim after the most recent legislative session and talk a little bit about um, what happened, what we worked on, hear what your concerns and issues and interests are, and talk a little bit about what we anticipate will come into play in the next legislative session. So, really just want to kind of hit the highlights of kind of uh, what we worked on this year. I won't talk about everything that we did, but if you do have specific questions or things that you want to ask about, please fire away. Don't hesitate to interrupt me, or we can make it as conversational as you want. As a reminder, the coalition represents over a hundred cities outside of the seven county metro area. We work on issues related to local government aid and property taxes, economic development, transportation, environmental regulatory and funding and infrastructure issues, and annexation and land use. Uh, but we also, as you're going to hear, this year got pulled into a number of other issues that we were happy to, happy to work on. You know, last year, the twenty twenty-three session was a big year at the legislature. They had a big budget. They passed a lot of policy. Uh, and so I think our hopes and expectations were that they would kind of take a break a little bit, focus on what was really, really important, focus on what was really, really necessary and basic, um, and then pump the brakes on any kind of new big policy. Um, and so the things, as we went into session, our priorities were shore up our fragile EMS system. Uh, we've been hearing a lot from our members, including you guys, over the last two years about the struggles around providing emergency ambulance services. Uh, pass a bonding bill that funds infrastructure, especially water, wastewater, uh, transportation projects, things of that nature, and then, like I said, pump the brakes on new policy. They put a lot on cities in the twenty twenty-three session, um, and I think there's just, you know, needs to be some time to absorb all of those changes and work on actually implementing them and making sure that they can work, work well. There was a little bit of a budget surplus that got a little bit of play, uh, but again, it wasn't a budget year. They did all of that last year. Um, and so, you know, there were a few money items at play, but it really was about about policy and then the other items of EMS and bonding. On the EMS piece, we worked very closely with Senator Housechild and Representative Liz Lagarde to introduce basically an emergency funding bill. As we looked at the landscape of what needed to happen with EMS, it's a big topic. There's lots of moving pieces. There's lots of different constituencies. There's lots of different ways of providing EMS throughout the state. Um, but we jumped into it because about fifty-five percent of the license holders are local governments, and most of those are in rural Minnesota. Um, and so we heard from our membership a real need for really providing some financial resources to just kind of bolster folks as they did further work to refine the EMS system. And so, um, there was a legislative task force. We put together our own group of folks internally, of our members, to get a sense of, of what needed to happen. And again, you know, as we talked to folks around the state, it came down to money, money, money. And so the bill that we introduced with Senator Housechild and Representative Liz Lagarde really focused on one-time emergency aid of a hundred and twenty million dollars, uh, which is a lot of money. It's a big ask. Um, but it was very much based on statistics and figures gathered from the Emergency Medical Services Regulatory Board uh, for losses that providers incurred in twenty twenty-two. So we felt it was pretty justified. We were, I think, pretty disappointed when the governor came out with only ten million dollars for aid. Um, that was pretty low. Um, and I think kind of got the conversation off to a bad start in terms of his supplemental budget. Um, as we went through all of the twists and turns and up to the very end, uh, we were able to secure twenty-four million dollars for aid for providers, and then there was six million dollars for some innovative programs and pilot programs for a number of parts of the state. A couple of counties, St. Louis being one of them, and then a couple of counties out west, Grant and Ottertail. Um, but the twenty-four million dollars is really kind of what we focused on, that aid. Um, it'll be, uh, there's a calculation of what you would get. There's a formula that we worked on with members of the legislature. Uh, our estimate is that you guys will be getting approximately two hundred and twelve thousand dollars out of that. Uh, it'll be payable at the end of the year with your local government aid, and there's a handout in the packet that I gave you that describes a little bit more some of the timelines and the procedures around that. And then obviously, we'll continue to be in touch with our members as, as those plans are solidified by the EMS RB or the agency that's now going to replace it, um, and the Department of Revenue, who's actually going to be responsible for putting the money out. But, uh, we were able to put together a pretty broad coalition, uh, worked very closely with the Ambulance Association, worked very closely with, uh, units of government from around the state. Um, the bigger providers, even though some of them were not going to be getting any money, were very helpful uh, in our, in our efforts. And I think the, the understanding is that this is only a band-aid, uh, that we're not done by any means. Uh, there's a lot more work to be done. Uh, but I think, you know, part of that will be identifying ongoing ways to fund these operations because obviously having it fall on, on local governments to service very large service territories is just not a sustainable way to do this. Um, I think if you were building a system from scratch, uh, this is not how you would have done it. Uh, but this is, as they looked around the landscape in the nineteen eighties and saw what was happening and decided to formalize that, this is the system we got. So. It'll take some, some work, uh, both on the, the regulatory side, the reform side, and then the money side. But I think we're off to an okay start with the twenty-four million dollars. I'll pause there if there's any questions or comments specifically about that, because that was a big area of focus for our, our work this year.
Go ahead, please.
Going to keep plugging away on it and working hard, you'll get the rural parts taken care of and?
Yeah, yeah, I think, you know, we, we were very upfront with folks, um, because, you know, one of the, the, not criticisms, but concerns put in our direction was, well, you know, one-time money isn't, you know, isn't going to solve the problem, and no, it isn't. There's a long-term issues that need to be sorted out, and I think, you know, once we get into a little bit later in the fall and into the, the early winter before the legislative session after the election, and we have some understanding of what the, the lay of the land is, at that point, I think we'll have some, some more plans going. I mean, my, my brain is kind of clicking on some possible ideas, but there's a lot of conversations that we'd have to have first, but we're not giving up on it by no means.
Perfect.
Are some of the other communities having the same situation that we're in, which is large service area, one municipality, and no way of working with the other organizations because they don't have to go into an agreement? So why would you go into an agreement?
Yep, hundred percent. That is, that is, you know, especially, especially up north here. You know, the service territories are incredibly large, and you're relying on the good graces of your neighbors to kind of help fund it. So yeah, no, it's a very common, common problem.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Please. Is there any talk at the federal level as far as relooking in the Medicare payment? Because I think that's what's really causing most of it. That hasn't been updated since in the eighties, from what I understand, and and if that were to be updated by the feds, I think that would probably take care of everybody's problem.
There's, yeah, there is been discussion. Uh, we actually, um, we were talking earlier before the meeting about the League of Cities Conference. We had a panel breakfast that we hosted, and one of the guys on the panel was from the Mayo Clinic, and he does their regulatory stuff and is very plugged into the federal efforts. And there's a number of, of funding mechanisms that he referred to as extenders based on basically how rural is your service area? Um, and it adds a little bit on top of the regular payments, and so I think one of the things that I know is under discussion is, is enhancing, certainly keeping, but then also trying to enhance some of those extenders. Um, but it's, I think a lot would have to be done if, if you really were going to get Medicare to kind of fully reimburse for what the services cost. Um, I'm, you know, there's efforts going on there, but it's, it's a slow, slow road, as you know.
Good, thanks.
So the formula, how, how's the formula determine the amount of?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question, and I think we do in our packet here lay it out a little bit, but it's really um, a relationship of, uh, the size of your, uh, service area and the volume of calls that you have. And so the, the larger your service area and the lower volume of calls you have compared to that, you're not getting, um, sort of the scale that you need, right, to pay for the services. Your aid amount will tend to be higher. Um, and so that's in very rough, um, kind of how it was, the, the spirit of the calculation. There's kind of three different tranches of, of dollars, but two of them really relate to that. One is just kind of a base amount that everybody who otherwise qualifies would get. And so the dollars themselves really went, um, to providers in rural areas. Um, and also though skipped like the Mayo Clinic in Rochester and Duluth. And I think they also do St. Cloud. Mankato has a, a larger provider. Those folks basically got cut out of it because we really, the legislature really wanted to focus on the, the really rural areas of the state, especially those that were being served either by local units of government, joint powers, tribal governments, or, you know, there are still some for-profit entities that, that, you know, are out there. Um, but those are, are further and further between. So it's a complicated formula, but basically it's a relationship of size of your service territory and volume of your, your calls.
So about how many, um, service areas are the size that we have?
How big is yours?
About a thousand square miles.
Holy cow, you're on the very top end. Um, you know, the, otherwise, the ones that I'm most familiar with, I want to say like Virginia might be six hundred plus square miles. So you guys are very, very large.
And do you know what they got for the aid by any chance?
Not off the top of my, not off the top of my head.
Close rural areas? I mean, the aid out of the eighteen million, right, is what it?
Twenty-four, yeah.
Well, doesn't six of it go to a certain thing?
There's thirty million.
There's thirty, yeah, there's thirty total. Twenty-four went into the aid program.
So it's even less, we're, we're at maybe one percent?
Um.
We're getting?
Close to that. I mean, there are probably a hundred some odd entities at least that are getting some level of distribution, and which is, you know, why we were, you know, I think, really fully understanding that we needed to push for a higher amount of money in that, that fund. I mean, I think, you know, nobody, I think we should feel good that we got some money, but nobody should feel good that it was only twenty-four million dollars compared to what the need is.
Out of the hundred or so entities, how many of them are a million or more dollars in the red?
I don't know that any of them are. In terms of the, the aid that they got?
No, they're ambulance service.
Um, I would, a few of them would be. You know, I think some of the, the, you know, again, the range ones, Hibbing, Virginia, they're probably in that neighborhood. And there's some very small ones like, uh, say Kokato. I know they only serve, you know, ninety-five, you know, square miles or something, and their, their, you know, allocation was very low. So, yeah, it's, it's, it's not ideal. It's not perfect.
Yeah, I guess why wouldn't you have looked at the highest indebted entities? To provide them with a little more than, uh, you know, one, one percent or less.
Yeah, and that was honestly our initial proposal, was really looking at what was your loss in twenty twenty-two and trying to reimburse you for that. In working with legislators in both parties, um, there was a preference, um, especially on the part of Republicans, to do more of a formula-based, formula-based thing. So our initial proposal, I think, was closer to what you envisioned, and, and, you know, that was part of the discussion, but I think as Senator Housechild was trying to get a bill across the board, weigh all of the interests, and, and, you know, actually, you know, get something passed, that was, I think, one of the concessions that he, that he had to make. Um, I'll touch just briefly on bonding bill. Um, of course, last year there was a big bonding bill, but they had missed the year before, so this was really kind of just getting us back on schedule. Um, we always advocate pretty strenuously for the Public Facilities Authority programs, water, wastewater, um, lead pipe replacement, starting some of the work that we did last year around that issue, um, other grant programs that support economic development, for any host of reasons. Um, uh, you know, the legislature just was not able to get a bonding bill across the line. Uh, you had lots of drama in the state senate with Senator Mitchell uh, from Woodbury, who was arrested, uh, for burglary, um, which kind of threw session into a spin for a bit, and then you had a lot of just competing, competing items that, uh, the Democratic majorities wanted to work on. There were discussions around constitutional amendments and sports gambling and a whole bunch of things that, uh, was not a bonding bill. And so it was, um, there was just a lot of oxygen taken out of the room on what we would consider kind of the core items of discussion. Um, and so I think, you know, we'll be coming back next year, obviously, with advocating for those things, you know, putting the press on. Um, and I think there was less appetite this year because they had done such a big bill last year uh, to make up for missing the year before. Um, but that's not really an excuse. I think that was their thought process, but these things just pile up, these projects that need to get down, local projects that are important to all of our cities, and then just the infrastructure stuff that's pretty core to the work that you do.
They get to be more expensive. Every year you push it out, it becomes more expensive.
Yeah, it, it's amazing. As we talk to cities, just, you know, they had a project that they, you know, originally got bids for, you know, two or three years ago, and, and the cost now is, you know, thirty percent higher, you know, just some sort of really, really extreme number. And so, you know, I think it's on all of us to hold legislators accountable, uh, and the governor for getting a bonding bill done next year. Um, the one other item I want to touch on is, um, we spent a lot of time defending, along with our colleagues at the League of Cities, the Metro Cities Organization that represents the suburbs, other local government groups, uh, cities prerogatives around zoning, uh, and, um, housing, um, and there was-
I have that note on my-
There was a lot of effort to take away, uh, a lot of your authority when it comes to, to zoning and basically um, allow for what, or make you, uh, make you take, uh, what's referred to as upzoning, which is putting, you know, more dense number of units, uh, on single-family lots. Um, there are cities that are already doing this and can do it. They have the authority to do it. Um, they're making those choices. Different cities will make different choices. And so we spent a lot of time, more than I would have liked, honestly, having to work on that issue. Um, and it really was kind of cities against the world. Um, you had a lot of, um, the realtors, the builders, um, progressive groups, housing advocates, homeless advocates, labor unions, the Federal Reserve, all kinds of people out there saying that this is the way that we should go. Um, but in the end, we were able to kind of just wrestle it down to a draw, and nothing passed on the housing front. But I do think it will continue to be a discussion. Um, but I think our role in this as representatives of rural Minnesota is to help the legislature and the powers that be understand that what might work in Minneapolis or Minnetoka is not going to work in I Falls. Um, and that, you know, you guys need to be given the flexibility to, uh, do housing in the way that makes sense for you. Um, you know, because a lot of these ideas are predicated on transit, and in a lot of our communities, there is not as robust a transit system, um, as there is in the metro. And so that's our role is to help continue to outline those differences. You know, we all understand the need for housing. We all want there to be more housing, um, but you can't sideline the cities, the folks who are- but you can't sideline the cities, the folks who are largely, you know, need to be at the table in terms of implementing these things. So that was a big, we spent so much time on it, it was, it was, it was kind of frustrating.
Well, I'd like to wish you good luck in them realizing what works down there won't work up here, and if you get it done with housing, I got a list of some others.
Yeah, yeah. And that's often, you know, the role that we play is really to kind of explain these differences and like, you know, it's just not the same down there as up here, out in Worthington or in Winona, or, you know, wherever you might be in rural Minnesota. And it's different between I Falls and Worthington and Winona, and, you know, what works for you guys doesn't necessarily work for them either. Kind of rounding out to conclusion here, we've got a, an election, I think, as we all know here, coming up. All 134 members of the House are up for election. And that, I think, will say a lot about what happens next year, how that turns out. There's going to be at least one, but potentially up to three special elections in the Senate. So we could see a fairly dramatic change in kind of the powers that be in St. Paul. Or it could stay static. I'm not good at making predictions necessarily on that. I've been burned many times, so I've kind of stopped. I can give you the options, but I can't, I'm not going to give you a lot of specifics on what I think will happen. Otherwise, we've got our summer conference coming up here at the end of the month in Wake Park, and then our fall conference in Alexandria this year. And I know it's a hall for you guys to go almost anywhere, but certainly, if you can make it, I think it's well worth it to mix with our members, hear some of the panel discussions that we put on, talk about, you know, common issues that affect cities in rural Minnesota. They're generally pretty, pretty good events. And then session starts middle of January next year, so it'll be off and running.
Any questions for Bradley?
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
Absolutely. Thank you guys so much. We really appreciate the support and good luck with the rest of your meeting.
All right, we'll go to Consider a Road Closure for Chamber of Commerce Crazy Days on July 31, 2024.
Good evening. Thanks for your time, for allowing me to come here and talk with you about our annual Crazy Days celebration. It's such a great time for local retail businesses to be able to out with the old and in with the new, get ready for fall, and they really do count on this celebration that we do for them. And as you mentioned, July 31 is when we're doing it this year. It's usually always the last Wednesday in July. And we would, we are requesting the same 300 and 400 blocks on Third Street. And of course, we'll be working with the state, with Minnesota Department of Transportation for the approval to get that street closed down, Third Street closed down. And we'll work with the city also because we, you know, we'll need barricades and picnic tables again, and waste baskets. And I've already been speaking with Mike Wallace, and he's been wonderful to work with. Well, anybody at the city is always great to work with, so very responsive, which is really nice. And what else can I tell you about for Crazy Days? Nothing's really much different. The food trucks will have, we are going to have a bouncy house again this year.
Any live music this year?
Well, you know, we would love to have some live music. We're, I'm working on it as hard and fast as I can. The problem is, is, you know, the money part. So, you know, when we had the contract with the city, there was always X amount of dollars that was put towards that. And it was about almost $5,000 that we had to work with to support this. We have $500 in our budget for it. So then I'm kind of behind the curve ball because I would have loved to have come to you and asked, you know, is this something you could help us support? Help the retail support something like this? And I'm sure you would have received it well, but, and we'll get more organized with that for next year, is what our plan is. I did want to make one correction. I am now no longer the board chair of the chamber. I believe that leadership is meant to be shared, so I did step down, and our new chair is Callie Briggs. I do, I am working with the chamber, though, as the events coordinator, so that's, you'll see me come before you over the next year for things. Just wanted to make that little correction.
All right. Well, at this time, I guess, the chair would entertain an option to do the road closure and provide the things that Ms. Zarin has asked for, for Crazy Days.
Did you say you were going to do the call, mend out, or take care of the mend-out road closure?
Yes, they do.
Yes, yeah, we do, we take care of it.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Buller. Any discussion? Please.
Chief, any issues with that?
We talked about Medicare.
Perfect. Call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Right. And I'll vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Thank you. All right, next, consider a request from Coochin County to suspend calendar parking on Fifth Street between Sixth Avenue and Ninth Avenue during the jail expansion project. Do we have set dates on this at all? Just, please, chief.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Short answer is no, fall of 2025 was in the letter.
Okay.
So.
Perfect.
That was all I had.
Oh, I appreciate that. All right, so the chair would entertain a motion to approve that calendar parking suspension.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller.
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Kaler. Discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, chief.
Bye.
Glad you came.
I really appreciate you. All right, next, we have a Board of Zoning Appeals affirming the decision on a setback variance for I Falls Real Estate Holding LLC doing business as the Falls Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram at 309 Fifth Street. The resolution is before you, and the chair would entertain a motion to approve that or affirm that decision.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller.
Second.
Second by Councilor Wegner.
Wegner.
All right. Any discussion? Kelly, no issues, obviously, since it came through?
No, no issues at all, Mayor. Also, the commission is the first part of the process. They need ability to use that for their.
Absolutely, yep. All right, then I'll call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I'll vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. Thank you. Next, we have a resolution approving application for an exempt permit for the International Association of Machinists and Aerospace Workers Local W33 to conduct a raffle with a drawing to be held on October 11 at the Bob Walls Memorial Union Hall. Chair would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden.
Second.
Second by Councilor Wegner. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I'll vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. Next, we have a committee of the whole recommendation, consider the first reading of the updated International Falls Charter as presented by the Charter Commission. This one has been lingering for a while because we haven't had a full council, so now that we do, chair would entertain a motion to have the first reading.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kaler. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Wegner. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I'll vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. Next, we have a little bit different thing we don't do very often, but the chair would entertain a motion to close this meeting for the purpose of considering property acquisition with the full city council present per Minnesota Statute 13D.05 subsection 3. Section 3, chair would entertain a motion to close this meeting.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Wegner. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I'll vote yes, motion carries, 5-0. Are we back open?
Yep.
All right, we have just came out of a closed session to discuss the purpose of acquisition of property, the property that had been discussed. We are interested in looking at, we will be having some city staff look at the building, and upon getting more information, this council will make a decision on what, if we move forward on that. So now we're at item number 10 of our agenda. Any other business to come before the council? Please?
Impound yard. Where are we at on our impound yard? I thought that was supposed to be done by now.
Chief?
Thank you, Mayor Council. It'll be the same as the other one, I was a very short answer. Ted, like we said before, has everything, and he's waiting on external entities to move forward with it. Nothing to do with Public Works at all, but again, it's waiting on the guy, I'm not sure who it is, to come up and kind of hook stuff up with Minnesota Power, I believe.
So the fence is all in place and all that's done?
He didn't want to, the last time I talked to him, he didn't want anything, didn't want the fence up because it makes it harder to put the wiring and stuff. Again, this is stuff I'm not really familiar with, and Ted's coordinating it, but.
So basically, there's nothing?
No, it's not ready yet, no. We can only move as fast as we can get the people up here to work on it, so that's where we're at. Yeah, we're, like I said, we, the county is still allowing us to store our vehicles at the impound lot. We've had no issues on that front. I can't speak for anything else as far as the discussions go with the other stuff, but yeah, we're working as hard as we can, but at the end of the day, Ted is just waiting on people as far as he knows.
Any other business? Public Works is going to be working on that, okay? Get that thing done so we can move some cars? We're getting a lot of calls about moving cars, junk cars, I'm glad it's up.
I'm hearing calls for that as well, and I would love to talk to you after, after about that because there are some other weird issues. All right, any other business? Thanks, chief.
Thanks again.
All right, we'll go to the reports of the administrator, attorney, department head, city administrator.
Deputy has nothing tonight.
Excellent. City attorney?
I don't think I have anything additional. I missed the last meeting. Did Betty update you kind of on the airport legal stuff?
Yes.
For annexation case? Then I don't have anything else.
Okay. Department heads, chief? All right, go to the reports of the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions. Nothing? Anybody else?
Got a couple. Please. So we had a airport steering committee meeting. Councilor Kaler and I attended with Commissioner McIntyre and Choblum and Betty and Adam Cole. We had a really good meeting this time. Annexation is moving forward. I'm hoping we're done with it by the end of this year, so it's good news. We've worked on all the properties now. Walt was at the airport commission meeting where we brought up some of the questions on, there was a couple of properties that we had questions on, so.
Descriptions need to be changed.
Yeah, legal description.
People notified that they're, yeah, mainly descriptions, and that was voted there to move that forward too, so.
And we'll be continuing to work on the joint powers agreement as we go forward with the steering committee, which is scheduled for July 30, I believe, the next one.
I believe so.
Yep. And then an airport commission meeting, which we talked about there, where we brought, hopefully get a move on, working on a emergency response center to be put out there. Hopefully, they're going to get ahold of Adam Manasa and S, what are the, what's the?
SEH?
SEH, to look into the FAA funding for that, request for that, which would be a fantastic thing for our community.
Yep, absolutely.
Huge. And we had a land, land use and legislation meeting today, was not very well attended, but Lisa and I discussed all the stuff and.
Oh, I thought it was even canceled.
Really nothing new to bring out there.
Oh, no, we didn't cancel it.
We solved all the world's problems.
Excellent.
But, yeah, that's, that's all I got.
All right. Anybody in the audience have anything to bring forward? Hearing none, will, your correspondence, the Minnesota State Demographers Office, population estimates, International Falls Rainier, Rainy Lake Convention and Visitors Bureau meeting minutes from June, Coochin County Board of Commissioners meetings from June 11th and 18th. We will be closed on Thursday, July 4. Our next meeting, council meeting, is going to be July 15 at 5:30. There is a concert going on very shortly over at Bacchus. You guys should swing on over and watch Chris Cruzy from The Voice. Should be, should be a good time. The Beer Gardens are still over at the amphitheater, so go there first.
Yeah.
No, what?
Yeah.
Go there after. You can't go to the Beer Gardens first.
Why can't you have a?
Do you agree?
Why can't you have a designated driver?
Yeah, I don't know how you whack that Beer Gardens. I'm just going to go have a beer with my cheese curds. I don't know how you whack that, the Beer Gardens.
I was bringing my wife, she was driving.
Yeah.
All right, this meeting is adjourned.